There we go. All right, it is six o'clock. I am going to just drag our feet maybe just a minute longer because I do believe the Vice Mayor will be joining us. So we'll wait just a second. But if not, we won't delay long because we do have a quorum. We could get started. So bear with me just a moment. And there we go. Perfect timing. All right. I'll ask staff, are we ready to get started?
Thanks, Mayor. We are ready to go.
Perfect. Well, with that, I'd like to begin by calling this meeting to order and welcoming everybody to this joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the Successor Agency to be former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two. And I'd next like to jump to roll call and ask our city clerk if we could have a roll call of the council, please.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Sparks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Here.
Mayor Landman.
And here. Thank you. And before we leave roll call, I'd like to follow our usual practice and ask our city manager if he'd be kind enough to introduce all the members of staff that are here tonight for the public.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So we have myself, obviously, Damian O'Vid, city manager, and then our department heads are here with us tonight as well. So we have Andrew LaCorder, our Director of Administrative Services, Craig Scott, our City Engineer and Director of Public Works, Michael Parrish, our direct, our Police Chief, and also Noah House, sorry, our Planning Director. And then we also have our C D Attorney, John Barker, here, and of course, Kevin Patterson, our Deputy City Clerk. And I think that rounds it out for tonight. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. With that, I will ask everybody who would like to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. That's always a difficult exercise over the Internet. So I appreciate the effort. With that, we're going to jump now to item four. This is approval of the minutes and notice of waiving and reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and or adopted under this agenda. So this is an action item. We do have five meeting minutes tonight. I'll begin by mentioning that my understanding is there's no requirement to recuse yourself if you've reviewed the minutes, even if you have not attended. And I only mention that since we have five separate minutes. We have some of us have attended some, seven have attended others, and just to help save everybody's sanity, I believe that's an acceptable legal practice. I've seen carried in numerous meetings and at the county level. So with that, I'll begin by asking if there's any corrections or additions to any of the minutes from my colleagues. I'm not seeing any hands go up, heads shaking. So with that, I'll ask if we can go to public comment and see if we have any input from the public.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Kathleen Tandy, please go ahead. Kathleen, are you able to unmute?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Loud and clear. You sound good.
Okay, good. Sorry about that. Good evening. I just wanted to quick quickly make mention of the fire hydrant at the corner of Old Redwood Highway in Page Street. I understand the council members were given the documentation by email. I would like to request that the city put two concrete poles on either side to forestall the potential of anybody else running it over and potentially flooding the area again. After a lot of a rather circuitous route, it does appear that the County of Sonoma is actually the owner of the dirt lot of which your easement is on. But really and truly, I'd just like the city to go ahead and put two concrete poles just to, as they've done with other vulnerable fire hydrants. Thank you.
Thank you. And I should mention, I recognize this is your first time speaking for the council, so I didn't want to interrupt you. But generally, we should have held that to public comment. That wasn't really about approval of the minutes, but it's your first time visit, so that's all good. So I will ask the city manager to get back to you on that issue, and I, the council has heard that, and I believe we all saw the letter that was accompanied a late addition to the packet. I'm seeing some nodding heads. Yes. Okay, so we have those materials. Thank you. So bringing it back for approval of the minutes then, unless there's any further discussion from the pub, from the council, I'd like to see if I have a motion and a second to pass that.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
So we have a motion from the Vice Mayor and a second from Councilmember Sparks. Could I ask for a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Mayor Landman.
Yes. All right. So that brings us next to item five, which is announcements. So I'll ask everyone to bear with me because I have a few paragraphs to read here. And I'll begin by saying this is a meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers, and that in conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Next, Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. And you can see details on the web at kattatycity.org. Next, citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nix by downloading the Everbridge app from iOS or Android app stores or by texting your zip code nine-four-nine-three-one to eight-eight-eight-seven-seven-seven. And finally, like always, we love to hear from you. So do please feel free to contact the city at seven oh seven seven-nine-two forty-six-hundred or through email at info@kattatycity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can still contact us at seven oh seven seven-nine-two forty-six-eleven. And of course, if you have an emergency, do please call nine-one-one. As always, continue to look for updates on the city's website and our social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixel, and Nextdoor. So that brings us to item six, which is approval of the final agenda, another action item. And I'll ask the city manager if we have any changes or proposed changes to the agenda tonight.
No proposed changes, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Now, this is largely a ministerial action, but since it is listed as action, I'm going to ask for public comment and see if anybody has anything they wish to say.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right, then I will bring it back to the council without objection, without any objection from my colleagues. We will call the final agenda approved. And this brings us to item seven, which is citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. And bear with me, I have one more long paragraph to read to you all. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item or items listed on the consent calendar or any matter or matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action in any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy twenty-twenty-one dash zero-one, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matter not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. As always, the mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. So with that, I will then open this to citizens' business or consent comments, and I'll ask our city clerk if anybody wishes to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right, thank you. So this will bring this back to the council. So this brings us to the consent calendar. We do have seven items tonight, A through G. And as always, I'll begin by asking if any of my colleagues wish to pull any item. I'll look around for some hands or see if anything goes up. And I'm not seeing anything just at the moment. If not, then I'd like to see if we have a motion and a second to pass this.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey.
I'll second.
All right. So that's a motion from Vice Mayor Harvey, a second from Councilmember Sparks, and I'll ask for a roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Mayor Landman.
Yes. All right. So let's see. That concludes that. This brings us to item nine, which is direction on future agenda items. And again, I'll ask my colleagues if I have any direction on future agenda items tonight. And I'm scanning. I am not seeing any hands go up. I'll wait just a second. Check again. Councilmember Moore, I do see your hand now.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. I know it may not be the protocol that we considered previously, but in the last several meetings that we've had over the last several years, I noticed that there was a concern regarding the Pledge of Allegiance and the espousing of the Pledge of Allegiance based on the modified one from nineteen fifty-four under, I believe it was the Eisenhower administration, where they added under God in there. So I noticing that there was some hesitation on some, on the part of several members of the council and expressing that particular component. I wonder if it's something that maybe we might consider going back to the pre-modified Pledge of Allegiance?
Well, number one, I'll ask you to talk to the city.
I know. God forbid I should go there.
We're all supposed to be right now, first. Yeah, and make sure, heaven forbid, yes, and make sure that number one, it's not in the position of staff sign it, not bring it back. And I suspect by the time it comes to council, you know, I'll be out of here. So it'll be going away present for our colleagues. But I'll just say quickly, not to weigh on the issue, but I have, my personal perception's always been some people have concerns about various things, and I always look at it as what people who wish to join in the Pledge of Allegiance are welcome to. If people don't wish them to, that's fine as well. And people, if they, for example, the section you're talking about, have concerns about that, I respect that as well. And I think that's essentially what the Pledge of Allegiance is supposed to be. It's a kind of a thing talking about the basic rights of this country of freedom. So I would think it would be included that. So if you could just follow our process, check with the city manager, and we'll bring it back then. And if you still would like to have us come forward, I'm sure we can do that. Does that sound acceptable?
That does. And and we might also consider putting in parentheses S for multiple gods. We're going to continue that avenue.
I'm sure there's a range of fascinating things you'd come up with for this Councilmember Moore, and I look forward to it. All right. Thank you. Anything else from any of my colleagues, since we've kind of opened the door here? I'm going to just take a second here and make sure I can see all of you because you're not all together, unfortunately, in my screens tonight. Sometimes we are, sometimes we aren't. All right. So with that, that concludes then new agenda items. So with that, that concludes then um new agenda items. So this takes us excuse me, just a minute. This takes us to item ten, public hearings. And we do have a public hearing tonight. Item ten A. And this is a first reading of an ordinance, a public hearing regarding an ordinance to approve a military equipment use policy. And I'll ask if we could begin with our staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and council members. Uh, I'm gonna be presenting this uh staff report on Assembly Bill four eighty one. And I will be returning at the next council meeting, um, because we want to uh make sure that that we have public comment and input and that uh council is comfortable with approving our AB forty one military equipment list. So we're not gonna finish this tonight. This will be the first public hearing followed up by a second. So um, I'll just go ahead and begin. So Assembly Bill four eighty one is a, is a new law that requires that each law enforcement agency in California obtain approval from their governing body to adopt a military equipment use policy by ordinance. And if if certain items aren't approved by council, then a law enforcement agent cannot deploy or even purchase military equipment and, and use it. So, so far, like I said, it's a new law. So the law um came out in January one of twenty two. And us chiefs and sheriffs in the state, we were told that we had a deadline of May first twenty twenty two to begin the process. So that's where we're at. We're beginning the process. I did place on the city website for public consumption on um June twentieth uh, a draft policy of the military equipment use uh so that not only council can view it, but the public can view it. And that's part of the law is to make that um available to the public before the hearing. Uh, so we've done that. Um, again, it is a draft policy. This, this is, this is um a big change. A lot of sheriffs and chiefs didn't really understand this law. Here at the beginning, we're starting to figure it out. Uh, so even Lexible is figuring this out as we move along. So again, what was published is a draft Lexible policy. So when I talk about military equipment, it doesn't necessarily indicate that the equipment has been used by the military. So I'm gonna have two items that I'm seeking for approval. So two equipment items. And I saw in the media that, I know we're not big like the city of San Jose, but the San Jose Police Department had one hundred pages of equipment that they introduced to their council. So we only have two items because we're a small city and we don't have a SWAT team and helicopters and such. I only have two items. So, but I will talk about what the law wants to call out as military items. So first, let me first talk about our two. So one is kinetic energy weapons and munitions. What does that mean for us? That means shotgun beanbag less lethal rounds. And the second one is command and control vehicles that are either built or modified to facilitate operational control and direction of public safety units. So those are my two items. And I'll go into more detail, obviously, here in a minute. Um, but let me call out what the Assembly Bill is deeming military equipment. So unmanned, remotely piloted, powered aerial or ground vehicles. So things such as drones. Mine resistant ambush protected vehicles or armored personnel carriers such as MRAPs or Bearcats, if you're familiar with those types of vehicles. Uh, high mobility, multi-purpose wheel vehicles like Humvees, two and, two and a half ton trucks, five ton trucks, or wheel vehicles that have a breaching or entry apparatus attached. Um, obviously, we don't have things like that. Tractor armor vehicles that provide ballistic protection to their occupants. Weaponized aircraft vessels or vehicles of any kind. Battering rams, um, slugs, breaching apparatuses that are explosive in nature, firearms with a ammunition caliber of fifty or greater. Any firearm or firearm accessory that launches explosive projectiles. Uh, noise flash diversionary devices. Um, munitions containing um tear gas, shockwave tasers, which are not our tasers. It's a different, that's a different tool. Um, and that's, so that's the list. So for us, for Kattati, what I'm seeking approval of council is our beanbag shotgun rounds that we currently have. And so what beanbag shotgun rounds are used for is um similar situation that we would deploy a taser in, but the shotgun round has a greater distance of seventy five feet where the taser is twenty five feet. So it's just another tool to deal with somebody that's maybe in mental health crisis or maybe somebody that we have to arrest and we want to use a less lethal force on that individual. I, I think it's important that council knows that we only have one type of shotgun. And that's the beanbag round shotgun. And the reason that's important for you to know is, so we have, we have rifles in our car. We have long rifles that are uh, that shoot a rifle cartridge. We do not have shotguns that, that shoot lethal rounds. We don't have shotguns that shoot buckshot or slugs or any lethal rounds. We only have the beanbag shotguns. And the reason I share that with you is that there's not gonna be any mistaking of ammo, right? So we're not gonna put let lethal ammo in our less lethal shotgun because we don't possess it, if that makes sense. Um, and then so that gives at least me peace of mind and hopefully you peace of mind. In addition to that, our shotguns are bright orange. So the forestock and buttstock on the less lethal shotguns are bright orange, plastic material. And, and we all know at Kattati PD that these are less lethal shotguns, and that's all we have is less lethal shotguns. But we may have an incident, incident where we got CHPs, deputy sheriffs, runner park show, and they'll see that if we deployed that weapon, it's obviously a orange shotgun and not a lethal shotgun. The second item is the uh command vehicle. So I'm sure you've all seen the command vehicle. It's uh, we got this with a grant back in two thousand and six, so this was before my time. It's a Homeland Security Grant. So this van is a, is a regional van, so it's housed here at Kattati PD. But any PD can ask me for it and deploy it because I don't really, the city of Kattati doesn't own it. We're, we just house it. Again, it's like, it's a Homeland Security Grant funded um item. The only, in, in my time here, the only agency that has used it is um Sonoma State University borrowed it for a um commencement that they had. And then Runner Park has used it for the Olympic, the Special Olympic Torch Run. Uh, that's the only time other agencies have used it. Kattati PD, we have used it on, on investigations. We used it for the, the fiftieth anniversary of our city down at Old Plaza Park. We deployed it for that. And then outside of the police department, sometimes Public Works uses it for their water collection. So when it rains, Public Works collects stormwater. And so to keep them dry, we let Al and the crew use the command uh vehicle for that. So not really a military item, in my opinion, nor is the beanbag shotgun round, uh because well, they're not military items, but the law calls them out as such for, for whatever reason. And again, so the, the um the policy is draft. And I will be bringing it back. I will tell you that um, so if I was to add, I'll just make this up, if I was to want to buy a Bearcat, which is an armored vehicle, and I don't plan on doing that, if I was to buy that, I would have to seek approval from council to, to purchase and deploy it, right? And I would start that at the budget process. I'm not gonna do that. I will tell you that I have, I do have an interest in drones at some point. And I think sometimes they kind of have a nefarious reputation, but they're being used, they're being used quite a bit by law enforcement agencies. You could have a call for service where they say, hey, this, the suspect has a rifle. I think, well, you know, you don't want to get too close to somebody that may have a rifle. And so from that's a, that would be an example to send a drone, send a drone livestream and take a look to see if, is it a stick or is it a gun or what is this, right? So they also use drones for um accident recreations and crime scene recreations. And so there's a lot of, there's a lot of reasons for drones. I'm not trying to sell you on drones tonight. I apologize. I'm just using an example of something that I may be interested in. But I can't purchase that without council approval. We need to, and then I want to talk about the Bearcat. So just for an example, so I'm not, again, I don't want to buy a Bearcat because they're, I don't know, five hundred thousand dollars, but um, there may be a need for us to have a Bearcat come into our city. So we could have a injured police officer, we could have an injured civilian, one of our residents. Maybe they've been shot and then nearby the suspect's still there armed. And we need to go save them. We need to go rescue this person, right? And so we need to have the ability to have um for example, Santa Rosa Police SWAT or Sonoma Sheriff SWAT come and do that for us. And so our policies needs to allow for, for mutual aid rescues for exigent circumstances like that. I just wanted to point that out. And then we have a policy for the, the use of the, the shotgun, and that's on, that's on our city website. It's in the Lexible policy. It's three oh eight point eight. And I can tell you the reasons for some more reasons for deploying the shotgun. So the Lexible policy calls out self-destructive, dangerous, or combative individuals. Circumstances where tactical advantage can be attained. And um, again, maybe not for somebody, it may not be just used for criminals, but it could be used for somebody in mental health crisis that we want to resolve this and get them help. And me and Damian have talked to the city attorneys about this as well. They, they have eyes on this and will have recommendations. And that's pretty much a straightforward staff report. And then obviously, I'd be happy to answer any questions uh that council has.
Thank you, Chief Parish. Let's just jump then to any questions or from the council. And I'll be looking for hands to go up. I see a hand first from Councilmember Sparks. Please go ahead.
I thank you very much. And uh, thank you for that really informative description, Chief Parish. Um, I had a few questions. Um, one was about uh the Lexible policy. Since we're relying on Lexible to push out updates and keep us aligned with um state laws, but the council also has to approve this military equipment policy, I'm just curious how that will work uh going forward. If Lexible pushes out changes to the military policy, would we see that as a council before adopting that or updating it? Or how, how do you see that um working?
I would see that. That's a good question. Um, I would see that. I would see the only time, looking at the legislation, the only time, so once we approve or you approve the um, the policy of what we can deploy in our city. My understanding of the law is that if I'm going to add a new tool, that's when I have to take it to council. And I would do that once a year. I, I wouldn't see me doing that mid-year. Again, I would associate it with the strategic planning and budget process and be transparent. I'll let you know, hey, I want to purchase this item and it falls under AB forty, four eighty one. And then we would have the discussion of strategic planning. So that's how I think it would work.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense.
Mister Mayor, if I, if I could, I, I do think that if um Lexible put out some revisions, they might have sensible revisions that, uh, you know, they learned from all the adoptions that are made in over this first year of AB four eighty one being effective. If they were to push those out, they wouldn't become effective immediately. Uh, the chief would have to propose that those changes come back and be approved by the, the city council. Just because of the way that the statute operates, instead of the chief being able to enact them, uh, they'd have to come back to the council.
Great, thank you. Um, I, I do have a few more questions too. Um, so my next question was uh, something I discussed with Damian on, last week. Um, but I just wanted to clarify that if anything new, if, if there's any new equipment that we're going to purchase, it, it didn't seem clear to me in the language of the the policy as written that every new purchase would have to come to council, but could I maybe hear from the city attorney? Is that the case, the way the policy's written, if there was new equipment and?
Yeah, actually, that perhaps the policy doesn't say that, but state law clearly says that. The, 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 the um, police department's not allowed to use anything that's categorized as military equipment without first seeking your approval. So they can't acquire it, they can't use it.
Okay, great, thank you. And then um I did have another question because about, about um coordinating with other jurisdictions and you, and, and you brought up mutual aid. I was gonna ask about that too. Um, because on, on packet page one oh nine and one oh six, it talks about appointing a designated who's gonna coordinate the use of military equipment with other jurisdictions that might be operating in Kattati. How would that work if, if, if we had a, heaven forbid, if we had a riot in Kattati and the sheriff's department came out? Um, or something like that. If we don't have, just so I understand how this would work, if we don't approve tear gas, um which is military on this list, then could the sheriff's department not use tear gas in Kattati? Just, I didn't quite understand how that was all gonna work together in this policy.
Yeah, so that's a concern of, of mine as well, right? So it's the same thing as the Bearcat, right? So if I need to call a SWAT team, so there's two SWAT teams that I would call in the county. It's either Santa Rosa PD or Sonoma Sheriff. So, and I just talked to the city attorney about this today. So we will make sure the policy allows um for exigency that a um, for mutual aid, that if another law enforcement agency comes in our jurisdiction to help us, um, we will cover that and they will be allowed to do that. However, you gotta keep in mind that that whether it's the Sonoma Sheriff or Santa Rosa PD coming in our city to help us, they too have to have the AB four eighty one approved by the sheriff has to have it approved by the Board of Supervisors. And then, of course, Santa Rosa PD has to have their AB four eighty one rules adopted by Santa Rosa Council. So I guess what I'm trying to explain is that um in mutual aid agencies should be allowed to come in our city and use um military equipment that we don't possess. And it needs to be approved by their governing body.
Oops, muted. Sorry. Um, and will the, will the language about that be just in this the next time we see it or?
Yes, so um, I'm gonna be working with Lexible. And then I'm gonna have um, Mr. Barker is going to review that for me as well.
Okay, great. And uh, last question was just about the um the shotguns. Um, I did a little bit of research and, and read up on these beanbag guns and they were quite a lot more powerful than I had initially thought based on the description of beanbag. They're able to deliver quite a bit of force if they're used at close range and I just I feel. And I just, I feel, I, I do feel comfortable with them to a certain extent, but I wondered if, if you could just talk a little bit more about how they would be deployed. The one thing that gave me pause was using them in a, a crowd control or riot situation because there were a lot of other cities around the country that had a lot of legal liability arising, arising from injuries that were sustained during riots, protests. And so I, I wondered if you could just talk a little bit more about that, like how would you see them being used in a crowd control situation safely?
Well, so one thing that I want to point out is so these, so when you're reading about beanbags being launched and with significant force, I think you're probably seeing the forty millimeter launchers that most law enforcement agencies have.
Well, no, I went and watched several videos of the, the exact model that's in the staff report. Shooting, obliterating coconuts into smithereens and whatnot.
So we, so for crowd control, we don't necessarily, so in my time here, it's more just the, the shields and the helmets and the batons when we're deployed. We haven't even used those in Qatadi in my time. We've had some protests, but they've been under control. So a beanbag shotgun round, yeah, it has some force. Can, can we be sued? Of course we can be sued. We can be sued for a lot of things. There is a need for them. So I will share with you of, of some reasons why. So, you know, I talk about the bowler wrap, for example, right? So if somebody is in some foliage, like some bushes, that bowler wrap's not going to work because it's going to wrap up in the trees and limbs. The taser may have some issues too. So the taser has two darts that come out. And so there's applications when, when you need a beanbag shotgun. Another thing is taser. So I've been, I've been tased. I have taken the darts. And I was held up by two cops when that happened. But when we tase people, there's not two cops holding them up, right? And so people fall forward. Sometimes people fall on their face when they, when they get tased. And I'm not trying to, and I, and I love the taser tool. We, we just used it and resolved a situation a month ago. But picture somebody with a knife. And it may not be a criminal, somebody in a mental health crisis that has a knife, they're a danger to themselves and others. And, and if we tase them and they fall face forward, they may, they may stab themselves. And so there's, there's a lot of reasons for these beanbag shotgun rounds. Do they hurt? Yeah. Can, can we get sued? Deploy them? Maybe. But I think it's a necessary tool.
All right, thank you, Chief.
All right, Councilmember Morris, here, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Chief Parish, thank you for that report and information. Have we deployed our beanbags before?
And so in my, I don't remember in my time here in Qatadi. I can't remember the last time we deployed, actually pointed them at people, but actually shooting somebody, I can't remember. And I, I'm sorry, but thirty-six years in the business with, between the sheriff's office and University of California, I've been in the business a long time, so I can't remember all uses of force. But I don't remember the last time we actually shot somebody with the beanbag round, we pointed it at people. It's like the taser. So remember, Councilmember Moore, we only deployed, actually, we only actually tased one person in twenty twenty-one, right? So fortunately, and I don't want to jinx myself, that we don't use as much force as a jurisdiction like Santa Rosa PD that's big and, and busier.
Yeah, and I, you know, I could be wrong, but I don't foresee us having to worry about crowd control here. I mean, you never know.
Yeah, but, yeah, but you never know. And, and, and hope, and Councilmember Moore, and hopefully we never need a Bearcat to rescue somebody that's down, right? But we just, we got to have a, a plan. We got to have a, a tool, just in case.
And how many of these do we have? Or does every vehicle have one?
We have four. Yeah.
And then going back to the command vehicle.
Yes.
Qatadi never had a command vehicle until we had the Ramon Salsedo issue that came through town. And then there was a, a rush to create a command vehicle because of the significance and the severity of that horrific incident. And then through the years, I, I think we've up, updated it with the grant that we received in two thousand and six, was it, for that Dodge?
Yeah, so, I mean, so I arrived here in January of eleven. I know that Chief, I talked to Chief Stewart about the, the van and how it came about for this staff report. I don't know anything prior to that, to the, to the command van we have now, whatever we had before that in two thousand and five, I, I don't know what we had, to be honest.
Yeah, it, it was something that I think because of our recognition as the hub and, and the fact that we did have mutual aid for corresponding cities, surrounding cities, et cetera, that they, at the time, they thought it was a good idea. Do you know if we have used it outside of emergencies and maybe public works or PR in a policing situation?
Yeah, so the, the only thing that I would think that would cover that would be, we, like, we did have it at the, at our fiftieth anniversary at, at La Plaza Park. I had a lot of police officers there. And we used it to, to work out of and dispatch out of. But no, not really. It's not really a PR tool. Or hasn't been.
Okay, but so we haven't necessarily used it for policing per se.
Well, we used it, we used it for policing. So we've used it, unfortunately for two homicides, we used it in my time here.
In the investigative?
Yeah, in the investigative role. There was a, I mean, having the, having the dispatcher at the fiftieth anniversary, that was a policing issue. And again, I can only remember in my time, Sonoma State used it for, for their commencement, which was a policing issue. And then the torch run, well, there we go. Thank you for the torch run. That would be for PR. So it's a special little big torch run and I've ran in it.
And see if I believe the smart ribbon cutting, right? At the station, wasn't it deployed for that as well?
Yeah, that's right. So when we unveiled the train, when Farhad unveiled the train, I think we had it there that day too. Yeah. Correct, City Manager.
But, but that was more just to show it off. It wasn't used as a command center per se, was it?
No, I would say no.
Yeah, it being the fact that it was paid for with a grant and it could be used in a, you know, mutual aid situation and things like that, I, you know, it doesn't seem to, to be overly used. And especially in light of the fact that it only has sixteen hundred miles on it.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty surprising, I know.
Thank you very much. Those were my questions on it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Vice Mayor Harvey, please go ahead.
The only other time, and it was before Chief Parish was here, that we brought it up to the airshow. And we had it at the airshow because I helped with that and we had a display and, and, and all of that. So it, it has been there also.
And then the mayor also, since we're on the topic of the command van. So with the, with the five small agency mutual aid for investigations, I've told, I've told the four other chiefs that we would deploy the van to Culverdale, Hillsburg, Sebastian, or Sonoma State if they requested it for, we do the mutual aid investigations. So we would deploy the van then as well.
All right. Vice Mayor Harvey, was that all you had to ask?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that we had used it for that.
Great, I wanted to make sure. Okay. Well, I had a couple of questions that came up. So we had a, a good question came that brought up the potential of conflicts for mutual aid. Since every city might allow and disallow various tools or modalities, or I guess it would be tools really in this sense. What would happen in that case? I just wanted to confirm, I would imagine if we're calling for mutual aid for a policing emergency of some sort in Qatadi, wouldn't the incident commander be ninety-nine percent of the time be and remain a Qatadi officer?
Depends. So I know, and I know that's an attorney answer. Sorry, Mr. Barker. So, good question. So I have quite a bit of history. So I used, I was the SWAT commander at the Merced County Sheriff's Office. So if, if, if it's a SWAT call out, so we would only do a SWAT call out if it's in the interest of public safety for one. So this is like a big need, right? This is like a hostage or something really bad.
But our IC would make the determination to call for that SWAT team recognizing the need, correct?
That's correct.
So the determination to use these various tools or modalities would come from our people who are following our rules and hopefully our values. Would, would that be a fair statement generally?
That's, that's a fair statement, yes.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, because I thought that was important because I could see these situations. But at the same time, I like the thought that generally speaking, we're going to be the incident commander on this. Now, as he says, certainly for a SWAT team or some specialized function, yeah, we're not going to be making those calls. You let the people know what they're doing, but that's like a specialized tool running itself. The call for it comes from, from us. I, I think that's helpful because I, I, I recognize that was a good question and I see the concern for some conflict there. So I think that helps
Yeah.
smooth that hopefully. I want to ask about the shotguns because I, I, I think Councilmember Sparks was getting a, a good question. I'm not sure we fully answered. And I'm wondering if I could ask you a little more to explain, I'm sure the, I know these exist, but the general guidelines for use because these are tools that if used safely are relatively safe and much better than some of the other things you might want to use. But if not used safely, if you don't follow guidelines, and I imagine it would be distance for one, certainly, age of the person, where you're aiming at a person. I imagine it's essentially portions of the thorax or something, but certainly not the space or, or something like that. So if you could just lay those out for us, what we use as our guidelines here in Qatadi, that might give, I think, the council and the public a good sense of security and understanding the safety measures, hopefully that are implicit in how we train to use this.
Oh, yeah, I could, Mayor, I could go over that. Just real quick on the, the scenario with this, with this SWAT response. So yes, Qatadi would be the incident commander. So we would make the call to request them. We would deal with the media. We would be the incident command. And then the tactical command, that's what you're talking about, the tactical command of SWAT would be the SWAT team leadership, just for clarification. Okay.
Understood, it has to be.
Yeah, so I'm looking at, so again, the kinetic energy projectile guidelines, which is just big words for beanbag shotgun, right? Is, it's on, it's on our website. It's three oh eight point eight. And so deployment considerations, distance and angle to target, types of munitions employed, subject's proximity to others, right? So if he's, you know, so you don't want to shoot a beanbag around at somebody that's close to other people. The location of the subject is taken into consideration. Whether or not the subjects actually dictate the need for an immediate response and use of controlled devices appears appropriate. Verbal warnings. Policy says get verbal warnings. There should be a need to immediately incatastrophate the, the subject must be weighed against the risk of causing serious injury or death. The head and neck should not be intentionally targeted when the officer reasonably sees the suspect poses an imminent threat of serious bodily injury or death to the officers. And there, there are safety procedures in the, in the policy as well. So I think we have a, we have a good policy for the deployment of the beanbag shotgun rounds.
Just one last quick thing. This is not that important a question, but you just got me curious. When we were talking about the kinetic energy weapons, or essentially the shotguns for the beanbags, using the orange stocks and barrels, is orange a standard that everybody recognizes non-lethal? Or is it just basically because it's a big bright color that most law enforcement and mutual aid will recognize that it's non-lethal? Because I think it's important for everybody to know. You were right.
Yeah, so the colors I see are, are yellow and orange. I thought orange was a better color, not that it's prettier, but stands out more maybe in the dark. So I went with orange, but the colors are, that I've seen are yellow or orange. And, and we did a professional, we didn't paint, you know, we didn't like paint this stuff. It's a professional aftermarket product that's plastic and, and large and stands out quite a bit.
And I assume it's hideously bright, so it's very clear, I'm hoping, right?
It's not that bright. I mean, it's not like fluorescent, but it's definitely orange.
All right. Well, I vote for fluorescent, but I, as long as it's close to it, I can live with that. Thank you, Chief. All right, let me look one more time to my colleagues, see if any more questions have come to mind. If not, I think it's time to open the public hearing and invite the public to share any thoughts they have.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right, thank you. Well, then I'll bring it back to the council and see if there's any discussion on this issue. And I'll look to see any hands. And if no hands go up, then I will ask for somebody to move the introduction of this ordinance. And I see Councilmember Sparks, please go ahead.
Thank you. Just two things I wanted to say. One was just a general comment when we start to look at the mutual aid policy. Is I'd be interested to see some way that we retain some amount of, that this council retains some amount of control over what types of equipment can be used in Qatadi. Because when we call in someone from another jurisdiction and they have the tactical command, it sounds like we sort of lose control of what, what types of military equipment they might be using at that point. So I, I'm, I'm sure you'll do a good job writing the policy that's going to come next time. I, I just wanted to mention that as a, something I'd generally like to see. And then my second comment is related to packet page one oh seven. I would like to see, and I'd like my colleagues on council to consider this. I'd like to see us remove the riot and crowd control and civil unrest incidents from the list of applications for the beanbag shotguns. Just been too many cities that have had extreme liability from people in chaotic situations, these weapons being deployed and people being really seriously injured and costing their cities millions of dollars. I know it's unlikely. We're probably not going to have a riot in Qatadi, but we're here to talk about that policy right now. So so I, 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 I'm, I find the chief, I found your description of some of the uses really compelling. Like if somebody's got a, you know, a danger to themselves, and this might be a safer way to handle it. But I, I just don't think that a riot or crowd control situation is the right place to deploy these. Thank you.
All right, let's see. Anybody else? Any final thoughts? Not too many hands. Yeah, I would be curious. I wonder if the question might be rather than what types of equipment mutual aid people are bringing in, what uses might be allowed? For example, the, I forget the Bearcat or whatever the name is for this huge truly military sounding vehicle, probably something from a movie we've seen in the last half decade. I could see that's something where there's no need for Qatadi and I certainly would support buying it. But on the other hand, I could see where a situation could arise, as the chief described, where I'd be open to allowing its use. So maybe that might be the way to look at it, where we might use these things and where, places where we wouldn't. I think that would be very helpful. I guess I'm open to talk, hearing the, some input on crowd control and see where that goes. I'd be curious to hear when we do discuss it, what would be the backup to that? Because these are all a series of less than lethal ways of controlling things that escalate. And if we take this one out, because it is, that is a harder area to control a group of people rather than a single person. And you're right, things could go sideways more there. But would then if things were truly out of hand in a way that hopefully would never happen here, I agree, would this mean we just have to escalate that much quicker to something? Um, would this mean we just have to escalate that much quicker to something more lethal? Uh, so I'd like us to take a good look at that, but I'm certainly open to talking about it, because, uh. Because I do see the concerns valid. Pastor Harvey, I see your hand, please go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like more information on that, because I, I'm a little bit concerned that. Uh, us only leaving a lethal tool there. Um, so I, I'd like more information on data, I, I mean, I understand the escalation and I understand. Things could go wrong, but I wouldn't want to have our officers only have their guns and have to. You know, deploy those when there are, when there is this other option. That's the only concern that I have, so I'd like more data and information.
All right, Councilmember Moore.
Um, I would concur with, with, uh, Mayor Lemon and Vice Mayor Harvey on that, um, I don't know that we want to take that tool out yet. Without further discussion and elaboration on there, um. Yeah, you, you, yeah, sometimes that might be the best option available, and if you don't have it available, then potentially you could have something that could be more lethal, so. Yeah, I'm not necessarily jumping on that. Uh, I don't see it happening, but, you know, as they say, stuff happens, and sometimes you don't see what's going to occur, so. I don't necessarily want to take a tool out of the toolbox. For those that are trying to provide safety for the citizens, so. That'd be something I think we can explore at the next meeting a little further.
Yeah, like give us some time to think about and some time for our staff to bring us some.
Yeah.
Both sides of the issue for us to weigh and assess, which I think would be helpful. Please, go ahead, Chief.
I had just, I just wanted to comment on other jurisdictions coming in with their tools, right, with their military equipment list. So, we are not going to be able, so if a SWAT team comes here. Their, their list is going to be. Per AB forty eighty-one guidelines by their governing body. Having said that. I've ran a SWAT team. We cannot tell a SWAT team that you can only use these certain tools, because that SWAT team. Uses all, they practice, they train, they use all those tools, they're used to using those tools in the interest of their safety and public safety. We can't pick and choose what they're going to deploy in our city.
All right, well, thank you for that, let me look one more time, Councilmember Sparks.
Well, thank you for that comment, Chief, that makes sense, if they've trained on one set of things, we can't just have a custom response to our policy, that makes sense. Um, so maybe there could be some sort of delineation of what situations would, would. Rise to the level of calling that in, you know, or. Um, and to be honest, most of my concern is around crowd control and, um. Pro- protests and what, what sorts of, what sort of. Of equipment they would use on citizens engaged in protests.
Honestly, I honestly believe that, um, because Councilmember Moore is like, and pointed out that we really don't have. Much civil unrest, but we can, and I get it, and Councilmember Moore said that himself. I think a SWAT call out is, is more probable than a riot control situation, to be honest. And we've been real close to having some, um, SWAT calls.
Chief, just, just for the record, I think when I was talking to you about this earlier, you indicated that if there were. If it were a crowd control riot kind of situation, it's likely somebody from your office would be. In command of that situation, unlike the situation where you call out SWAT.
Yeah, so that's more of a mutual aid event where we would have more control over the, uh, scenario. You're, you're correct, um. We would have more, uh, we would have more of a hand in the tactical command of a civil unrest compared to a SWAT call out, correct?
I hesitate to give a very poor analogy, but I'm not using good common sense, I'm going to do it, it would be much like. Your regular physician who's in charge of your care and manages it all. Asking for a special, a surgeon who specializes to working in something, um, that sort of thing, uh, there's a. I guess there's a delineation, I take the point, this is the value of these discussions, I think it's good for us, uh. Not all of us have years like the chief does, working in law enforcement, and this is how we work through these things, sometimes we come up with new good ideas. That the department can adopt, and I've seen a lot of willingness to that, other times. You know, we get to work through and find, well, it's a good idea, perhaps it's unwieldy, I mean, I recognize. You can't pick or choose what a SWAT team is going to do, or tell them what to do in each different locality, that's going to be a problem, so then it becomes. Pick or choose, and I would hate to, and I know nobody's suggesting we. Make a barrier to being able to do that, but I really do think it would be valuable perhaps when you come back, Chief, and I'm sorry to add more work to your busy schedule, but. If we could have just a little outline of. How a situation, a crowd, out of control, controlled crowd situation. Could arise and how it would escalate, and what the various steps we would take, what the various command and control steps we would take. And that might give us all a little more comfort in how the process is to understand. What situation, somebody might actually be in a position where they even consider firing one of these needing to fire a beanbag into a. A less than ideal situation when there's numerous people around, because we've already indicated that's not. Not our ideal way of using this, I, I think if you can give us some, just some background on how that works, maybe we can actually picture for ourselves the type of situations. The community would be in and what would be going on, the size and. The deal, the degree of law breaking going forward. Um, that, that would be helpful if, if you're willing.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that, Mayor.
Wonderful, all right, well, so we've had a pretty good amount of discussion, but let me just ask one more time. I see a couple of faces, I'm going to look here and see if anybody else has anything. I'm seeing smiles and shaking heads, so with that. I think I'll ask if we can have a motion to move this first reading.
Uh, Mayor?
To approve, oh.
Sorry, let me jump in, um, so this.
Please.
Uh, yeah, this one is just to open the public hearing and continue it, um, to August twenty-third.
Ah, so let me take that back, we didn't close the public hearing. We will continue it to the date you just mentioned, uh. Better warn the mayor about that next time, thank you. Councilmember Sparks, I see you.
Um, there's been a hand up in the, um, the attendees for a while, I wonder if it might be possible to open up for.
No, I never ever do that, Ms. Sparks, I can't do it, yeah, I'd be happy to, please. Let's open the public comment one more time, I see we have a late comer.
Thank you, Mayor Landman, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Marjorie Crump Shears, please go ahead. Marjorie, are you able to unmute?
Sorry, I didn't realize I was muted, hmm, alrighty, so. I, I do have a couple of thoughts about, uh, uh, what. Uh, we are being asked to purchase. First, the beanbag shotgun. Sounds really intriguing to me. Um, and I like that notion. In its use, the phrase mental health crisis, crises has come up more than once. And with our new save and nine eight eight number to call. I'm wanting to hear and know that Qatari has a process. For not sending the police first. But for sending save or somebody else so that we don't have to use that beanbag shotgun necessarily. Um, so that's one thought that I have. The other is command vehicle. What is that? I am thinking in my brain of a tank coming down the street. So, and I'm sure that's not it, I hope that's not it, but what? Command vehicle, what is, why do we need? I, I, I don't get that. Uh, and that's what I have to say, I look forward to the next council meeting. Um, and learning more. Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Jim Duffy, please go ahead. Jim, you have the floor. Jim Duffy, please go ahead with your public comment. I'm showing Jim is unmuted, but, um.
I'm wondering if. He's muted perhaps on his cell phone?
Is he, his mic's not working or something?
I'm going to give Mr. Duffy just a few seconds here and see if we can resolve this, because I know he's made the time to be here and would like to speak, so let's see if he can get that figured out. And perhaps while Mr. Duffy is looking at that, maybe we can come back to him, we'll answer, we'll have staff respond to the questions that Ms. Crump Shears brought up, I. Did want to point out, we're not so much asking to purchase, I think we've had these beanbags in this van for a long time, and. That is a good question, I know that a two thousand and seven Dodge van probably isn't exactly a tank or terribly militaristic. But it is a good question, what is the equipment in it, and what are the types of just general uses? That you might use it for, um, uh, I think for a member of the public, that's a fair question. So if we could, uh. And, oh yes, in the question about, uh. When we use the beanbags, uh, the boss says obviously going through safe first, and what sort of escalation would be necessary when somebody might. Be forced to use this with somebody with an acute mental illness crisis, threatening themselves or others. If you could speak just briefly to those two things, Chief, then we'll come back and try Mr. Duffy one more time.
Okay, and so the command van, um, if you're familiar with a Sprinter van, Sprinter style. Van like Amazon drives, that's, that's the actual vehicle, in the vehicle is, um. It's set up to dispatch. So we can go multiple with our dispatchers, uh, if we had to evacuate the PD. We could dispatch out of the command van. Um, we also keep, uh, evidence collection tools in the van. We have lights, emergency, we have lights, like, so if we have a scenario where we gotta. Work late into the night, into the dark, we have generators and we have external lights that we could put on the ground. So that's basically the command van. The regarding safe and the deployment of the beanbag round. Councilmember Moore asked, you know, when have we even deployed the, the beanbag round, and I can't remember the last time. Um, so it's a rarity for one, but. Our dispatcher, so the safe team response, whether it's going to be safe team or police officers or both. That is a dispatcher call. Because, um, they're the ones that receive the, the nine one ones or even business line calls, um. There, there would be, there are scenarios where people are in mental health crisis and, and the cops don't go. The only safe goes. But if somebody has an edged weapon. And they're in mental health crisis. Or they've committed a crime and do not want to go to jail. We will not send the safety, we will, we will send law enforcement officers. Um, for the safety of all, including the, the safety. So, I guess what I'm saying is it's triaged. As to the response, um, so. We use the safe team, uh, all the time for us, you know, people that are autistic and our police officers don't go, or. We have, um. We have juveniles that may be having a meltdown with the parents, and we'll, we'll send the safe team and not go. And so we, we use the safe team quite a bit, so I hope that answers that question.
Thank you, Chief. I'm going to go back to our, uh. Clerk, city clerk, and see if, uh, we can establish connection with Mr. Duffy and give him this opportunity to speak one more time.
Uh, Jim Duffy, you have the floor.
Are you able to hear me?
Coming through loud and clear, Mr. Duffy.
Oh, beautiful, thank you so much for your patience, um. Two quick requests, uh, one would be if, uh. The police department could track the individuals who are targets of the use of the military equipment. Uh, one of the complaints that credible critics. Of law enforcement using military equipment is, is that it's most often used. In the war on drugs and thus is very often used on black and brown individuals. And so wondering if we could track the ethnicity and racial breakdowns. Of any, the individuals who are the target of the use. And the second one is for far in the future, you know, a year or two down the road for the city council. When it comes time for you to really be doing a cost benefit analysis of is this equipment worth it to maintain? And keep, uh, that you be getting the reporting from the law enforcement agency. Of not only the purchase cost of the equipment, but the cost to maintain it. The maintenance costs and the cost for training on it, how much time do you spend training? On using this equipment and how much staff time is spent in doing that, so you get the whole nut. Of what this equipment is costing you to keep, and then you look at that and say, well, what else could we do with this money and do we really need it? Those are my comments, and again, thank you so much for your patience with the computer idiocy.
Not a problem, there's not a person on this podcast that hasn't suffered through the mysteries of Zoom at one point or another, so you're not alone. Uh, we'll bring it back, uh, I just wanted to ask the chief real quickly before we move to the next item. Uh, the, would we not, we do track use of, uh, force in our use.
Yeah, yeah.
I would imagine using that shotgun, if we use that, that would definitely be tracked for its usage, correct? And who was used on?
Absolutely, so if we deployed it in twenty twenty-two, I will be seeing you in twenty twenty-three with the annual police report, and I would call out. A beanbag deployment.
And that does go into some detail about the type of people that it's being used on to, you know, uh, race, ethnicity.
So.
In reporting?
In my use of force report to council. Uh, in the annual report, we did not go into specifics of gender or race, we did not, um, but. We do have the use of force template, and again, it would be called out. Why it was deployed, you know, what, why it was deployed and when it was deployed. Um, but not necessarily track gender or race, no.
Does the state collect that as part of their data that they require us to collect now, Chief?
Well, it would end up in RIPA data somehow.
That's what I was thinking, RIPA's a little bit at this point, unfortunately, still more of a black box than we expected, but.
Yeah.
That data is potentially there too, because I wanted to make sure it was being collected, um.
Yeah.
Somehow at some point.
Then Mayor, the second, there was, that was a two-part question, so the other one was cost, so it's called out in the draft, um, policy, so. The van is paid for, um. There's no really training associated, cost associated with the deployment of the van, it's just the command van, and, uh. Aside from the high price of fuel right now, right? Um, that's, that's a burden, is the high price, current high price of fuel, so. There's, I don't see any cost worries for the van, and then as far as the, the beanbag, um, shotguns, we already, we already own them, um. There, there's not a lot of training overtime associated with them, um. We, we, uh, we can, we can have somebody qualify annually with the beanbag shotgun round. In our parking lot, right? And while the cops on duty, no overtime, where you couldn't do that with a real gun. Um, in the parking lot.
I would hope not.
So, yeah, I would hope not, right, so anyway, I guess what I'm sharing with you is. I mean, if we had a Bearcat and things like that, yeah, there would be a, there would be a concern about continuing. Uh, to pay for these costs and purchases, but with the two items we have. It's minimal, I would just sure.
That's helpful, thank you, Chief. All right, I think we've covered this pretty thoroughly, I'll ask one more time if anybody has anything else they want to bring up. And if not, then we're ready, I believe, to move to our regular agenda. Uh. And to our one item on that, item eleven A tonight, and this is a wording of a construction contract for the twenty twenty-one pavement preservation project. And I'll ask for the staff report on that, please.
Mayor?
Mayor, members of the council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. We have a PowerPoint uh, slideshow that accompanies this presentation. This item is to award the construction contract for the 2023 street preservation project, which consists of low cost paving treatments, uh, first the digouts, crack sealing, and then slurry seal. Um, capital projects come before the council for during strategic planning and then adoption of the capital plan. And then, um, consideration for the design contract. And, um, following the design, we, we've, in bidding, we, we come to this point in time where we're considering a, award of the construction contract. Next slide, please. So this project, um, has been designed and, uh, was out to bid. We received bids on it. The lowest bid um, was 12% below the industry's cost estimate. And it's within the, 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 the approved city budget. We're within that with the construction cost and the construction management consulting services cost as well. This is an overview of the streets to be slurry sealed. Um, all right, next, uh, okay. And the, and the, um, the construction contract came in at 700,000. We, um, did a consultant selection process for the construction management services and decided and um, selected Fourleaf to, as the most qualified and, um, with, with all of those costs, we're recommending that the budgeted amount of over a million dollars be pulled back to, um, some, something around 900,000, 920,000. So we have 1.085 million in the, the budget. And we're looking with contingencies and everything else of being able to get by on 920,000. That additional funding would just go back into the unappropriated general fund. Balance. And next slide, please. So that is pretty routine as far as what we're asking from council tonight. Uh, taking a step back and looking at our, um, uh, street program, the city has been investing in its streets for quite a few, you know, a, a long time now. And if we go back to 2014, we had the downtown paving project. And of, of that cost, but on $520,000 in 2014 money. Uh, following that, we did Holiday Park, the L section, part of it in 2018. And, um, we're looking at 1.2 million for that project. Uh, there was a backing up that in 2014, again, there was a slurry seal project that, uh, we, about a quarter of the city streets were slurry sealed back in, in 2014. Then that was followed by the downtown project, the L Street project. Uh, then the rest of Holiday Park was picked up along with East Catati Avenue in 2019 for 2.1 million. Um, followed by 2020, and we had Quick Strike Part One, I like to call it, because that's when the entire Quick Strike project was designed, believe it or not, back in 2020. And using city funding, we went ahead and did our, um, first in a while, it is the first, I think, the city did this, the FDR Full Depth Reclamation of the named streets or the hub, the Outer Hub streets. And, um, that was during the fire. So we have a lot of construction pictures of this really eerie orange glow in the background that project. That was 1.2 million. Um, then just last year, we did the, the Burt Street Slurry Seal for $450,000. Followed, uh, for the overwinter project into the spring of the West Side project. Uh, 3.5 million. And we're just waiting for a guardrail to be completed for that. So up to that point since 2014, it's about nine, 9.6 million dollars we spent on roadway preservation and rehab. And we're not going to stop now. So with this project, the preservation, we have another project that, uh, city council awarded design on, approved design on just last meeting. Uh, before the break, we had the last meeting, like was in Ju- June. And, um, so that effort is underway. And we're looking to have that under construction in the spring. That's 3.2 million dollars. Uh, Quick Strike is grinding along. And if everything goes as planned, we would have it and also in the spring. So the spring is going to be between now and March, April of 2023. It's going to be a very busy time. We're, we're not, uh, we're, we're just going to continue, uh, pushing forward. Um, kind of an overall metric for this is the pavement condition index, which is zero, a street is just dirt, base, basically, you know, just completely destroyed to 100, which is a brand new pave. Well, a brand new paved street is more like uh, 93, 94. I don't know how we get to 100, quite honestly, because we, we pave streets and it shows up and as a 93, 94 street. And it, it kind of goes down from there. But that's, that's how we kind of grade our streets. So back in 2014, we were in the low 50s, okay, which is uh, a city streets with a index of 50 or even in the high 40s is, is failing. It's not just at risk. It, it has been risked. It is failing. And so we climbed up out of there and with, um, Holiday Park, after a few years, we got it up to 55. And, um, with the, uh, everything up to the West Side project, we got to a high watermark of 68. It's now back off to 66 because as time goes by, there's kind of this automatic, um, uh, feature in the Street Saber model, which builds in deterioration, natural deterioration of, of roadways until they get inspected again with our two-year pavement inspection program. Um, with this preservation project and the street rehab project, we're going to break the 70 mark, get up to 74. And that's significant because after 70, the scrutiny by the state and the local agent, uh, Sonoma County Transportation Authority backs off. And they no longer require maintenance of effort report. That, that's not really the end goal. The end goal is to have save money, significant amount of money, um, each year, because we're not rebuilding streets. Where we're just be, uh, doing low cost slurry seal preservation treatments. Um, when we finish the five-year CIP, which is available to everyone online, um, that we, we would be looking at a PCI of 83. And so we're being really good shape after the rehab and just in excellent shape in a few years, if, if we continue to keep with our program. Uh, this is, this is funded by Measure S and a bond measure that was passed just late last year um, to, to help fund unfunded liabilities. Um, so all told, uh, through spring next year, back, backing up all the way to 2014, we will spend about 16.4 million dollars on our roadways, which is just phenomenal. Um, and then we'll be able to get, start reaping the benefits of that. Okay. So returning back to the task at hand, the award of the construction project for the 2023 street preservation project. Um, city staff is requesting city council approve the resolution awarding the construction contract for the 2023 pavement preservation project, the pavement coatings company approving the construction management agreement with Fourleaf, approving a reduction of the project budget from 1.085 million to 920,000 and authorizing the city manager to approve construction change orders and amendments to the professional agreements up to the approved project budget amount. With that, I'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
And, uh, mayor, actually, one thing I will just add real quick is that, um, I, I, this might be obvious, but once we get into the seventies, we're going to be in a, in a, uh, select, very small group of cities with, um, uh, really good, above 70 street conditions. Um, in the Bay Area, there's not a lot. It's a pretty select group. And then probably equally important is that once you get to that and you, you move primarily into, uh, rather than reconstruction work, you move primarily into preservation work, we're going to be saving a significant amount of money each year in street work that then can be used for other, um, community priorities. So just add that at the end. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Obit. So this is a perfect time to ask the council if anybody has any questions, uh, for Mr. Scott. And look, you see if any hands go up. Uh, while people are thinking, I wanted to ask, uh, you gave a, a total of 16.4 million in roads over a certain amount of time, I believe, at the end, and it broke up just for a second for me, Mr. Scott. What was the timeline on that? Cause I understood we spent about 9.6 million roughly since 2014. Uh, so is this, when we hit that 16.4, is that, that at the end of this current five-year plan that's up on the, uh, city website?
No, no, that's after the spring. So we've got the preservation project coming in at 700,000. And the street rehab project estimated construction is 3.2 million. And then Quick Strike is 2.9 million.
Got it. Thank you. Um, could I ask you, uh, both you and Mr. Obit talked about the significant savings, and we've kicked this around before. This is one of the main reasons to do this. Because if we getting to this point, which it looks like we'll actually be able to accomplish now, um, and I think it's a pretty good accomplishment. Um, we should save us, be able to save significant amount of money that we can then put into more uses for the public. Can we have a, is there ability, even get a rough idea in dollars, what that might look like when we get to a point when it's just occasional slurry seals worth, rather than this catch-up and occasional full gut reclamations? Any comfort in putting any sort of number and what that could look like roughly as an annual savings for the people of Catati?
Around order of magnitude. Um, I know the PMP mentions around five or 600,000 dollars just to keep our PCI the same, just to maintain it, not gain or fall, just kind of to keep the status quo. And we've been spending close to 2 million every year. So, so the idea is that we would ratchet it back to about five, 600,000 a year. It's, it's well over a million dollars that we'd be looking at.
Okay. I guess then what I would be balancing it is just the position we were in and most other cities usually, and they aren't in that place where they could just do the maintenance of effort. They have to do more because most of us have been behind in our streets. Um, and it costs more to do that, right? Cause it's not simple slurry seals. It's often more so. Cause we talked about the savings. I want just to get a better sense. Perhaps it's something it's too hard to really pin a number on right now, but I was just curious what that would look like. Mr. Obit, any guesses?
All right. Well, in terms of annual savings, um, you know, in the maintenance of effort cost of about 500,000 in our annual average cost, doing all this reconstruction work of closer to 2 million, you're looking at um, in excess of a million dollars of savings each year.
Okay. So that's a, that's a kind of a rough figure, but I like that because that is pretty significant. Thank you. I'll look one more time to the council, see if anybody has any questions for staff in this. Not seeing any hands go up. So with that, let's open this to, uh, public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. I will bring it back then to council. See if we have any discussion for the vice mayor Harvey, followed by council member Moore. Please go ahead.
Um, this is really great news. I mean, we worked scrimped and saved and, and continued plugging along for a long, long time. So it's really good to hear that our PCI numbers are really finally getting up where they're very respectable. So, um, it has not always been easy, um, for us to, to do this, but I think that, um, the investment um, will be well worthwhile when all we have to do is do a little maintenance rather than these full depth, um, reclamation. So this is great news.
Councilmember Moore.
Uh, I was just going to concur with Councilmember Harvey, uh, barring any further discussions, we'll be happy to make a motion on this.
All right. Well, I think we see one more hand to speak, but we can certainly make a motion now, have a second, continue our discussion. So if you want to make a motion, go ahead.
I would move that we award the 2023 paving pavement preservation project to pavement coatings company and authorize the city manager to execute the construction contract for the project, the construction management and inspection agreement, and any needed change orders and amendments up to the approved project budget.
Thank you. And do we have a second for that?
I would second that motion.
Vice Mayor Harvey by just a nose. All right. So you have a motion and a second. I thought I saw your hand up, Councilmember Sparks.
I was just going to reiterate that my colleagues have already said, and this was really great news, and I'm really happy to see it go forward. Thank you.
Well, I would agree about a thousand percent with you on that one, because, uh, it's not as exciting a thing. You start talking to the public about roads and their eyes understandably and justifiably glaze over. But I've learned over the years, actually, this is a big thing. It's pretty important. And I think this is something that it, it's a really good thing for all of us who have worked here, whether in the past and have moved on, or those of us who are here now or just got here, uh, whether staff are elected. This is a nice legacy to live for the people of Catati. This is leaving them in a good place, caught up with work, uh, with everything nice and neat and clean, and some financial savings built in so people can move forward on other even better things. Uh, so I think this is something quite remarkable, and I will commend staff for their work in this and just say that I share your great pleasure in this. And with that, we have a motion. We have a second. I'll ask if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
And unsurprisingly, yes. All right. That carries, uh, four eyes, uh, one absent. Thank you, everybody. So that concludes our regular agenda and brings us now to the city managers report. So after all that good news, you can have a hard time talking this one, Mr. Obit. Let's see what you have for us tonight.
I'll try, I'll try to be, uh, exciting if I can, uh, overlay some of this into an exciting summary, but I'll try. So, uh, beat meetings, police beat meetings, um, you know, we have the six police beats in Catati, and they're, um, being held this week. They are virtual, but, um, I'd highly encourage anyone that wants to, uh, meet their beat officer or has, um, questions or concerns in their, in their neighborhoods to attend one of these meetings. And information on how to log in is on the city homepage as well as, um, it's being put on the social media. So that's happening right now. Um, right around the corner is National Night Out. That's Tuesday, August 2nd at 6:00 PM. And the city and the police department are hosting this down at La Plaza Park with, uh, free dinner as well as a free family friendly movie. They're, uh, they're showing Paw Patrol. In case you missed that in the theaters, you can come see at the park. And, um, it's just a great opportunity to meet, to meet, um, staff and police officers in just a more casual setting. So I would encourage you to go to that. And just a quick update on the mobile COVID testing that's at the St. Joseph's parking ride. So you guys know that, um, that they do, uh, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Well, they just added Thursdays too. So now it's Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And they have, um, tele, telemedicine consults as well as, um, treatments available for those that qualify. Um, just a little drought update that I thought was, um, interesting, that you might find interesting. So, um, we have the totals, water production totals in for June, and it's showing, um, 23% less water use this past June compared to June of 2020, so two years ago, when we were in drought. So it's a significant, um, savings. So that's a good, um, it's a good initial indicator as we're in the middle of the summer and, um, also great that our customers have, um, responded and are helping to preserve the water stored in the, in the region's reservoirs. Um, you may have, uh, or people may have seen, uh, some activity down at Catati Vets Hall in the parking lot there. There's a lot of equipment staged in the parking lot, and that's a, um, that's a monitoring well that the groundwater sustainability agency has been drilling out there. So if you're curious, that's what that is. They have a, they have them around the county, and this one just happens to be in the Catati region. They're going to drill it, and they're going to measure, um, shallow, medium and deep groundwater tables and just monitor them over time, just to see if there's, uh, for trends and changes as they, um, manage the groundwater in the space over the long run. Um, just a little, not great news, but the Athen statue in La Plaza Park next to the flagpole, um, something happened to the something happened to it recently, and the base broke on the statue. So Public Works is looking at it to see if we can reattach it. So you may see some constant. If you wonder why that's why, something something happened that broke the statue, the base of it. So we're looking at ways to repair it and hopefully not have a have the repair look invisible to people. So we're looking into it now. The wayfinding sign programs to quick update, the sign panels and the lighting and all that are expected in the first half of August. So it's finally going to come. They've been there for a long time. And so I know I've seen seen some graffiti, unfortunately, and things like that on the signs. So hopefully get those panels up so that isn't as much of a graffiti magnet as it has been. Also, the Pocket Park in McGinnis and Marsh Pathway project, that's that project's kicking off, I believe, this week. So we should start to see some field activities here over the next couple of weeks. And then, well, you all know, because you adopted adopted it tonight, but the prohibition on newer expanded gas stations was approved tonight by the council. So congratulations. That is done. And then just some other updates and recreation and community events. We have farmer's market continues through September, 4:30 to 7:30 in La Plaza Park. We have the next SoCo Market in La Plaza Park in August coming up. I don't have a date on that, but it's coming up soon. As I mentioned earlier, National Night Out, August 2, Kattati Accordion Festival, August 20 and 21 in La Plaza Park. And then we have after National Night Out, we have our final movie night in the park on September 23. We're planning, we're starting to do the planning for Kattati Candyland Trick or Treat. So that's going to be around downtown, and it's always a fun event. And then finally, at the end of the year, we have holiday shopping stroll and tree lighting early December. It's December 2 and 3. So start to and followed by breakfast with Santa on December 5. So that marking does on your calendar, so you can attend any of those that you want to go to. We still have a couple of weeks left in Camp Kattati, so there's space remaining if anyone wants to register, although all of you are not are not eligible because you exceed the age limit for the camp. But if you know someone that's that's under 18, then share the news with them.
That has to be an assumption on your part, Mr. Obit. I protest.
Yes. All right. And then we also continue to have tours of Rhonda Fletti Ranch each first and third Saturday through the summer, starting at 10:00 AM. We're also hosting in Canto Gymnastics Camp coming up for smaller children ages four to seven, and it's basic gymnastics and tumbling. And and that is about it. All the information on that on the rec events are available on the recreation page on the city website. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, let's see if we have any questions from the council. Please raise your hands virtually or otherwise, if you have anything you want to ask or share. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. I just wanted to give kind of a shout out. I really appreciate the outreach that's been done with Chief Parish and the city manager regarding the police department and community engagement. I think that's great. I do have a question, though. The term beat, is that something that we should be using with the police department these days? Is there another term? Is that a throwback to an old term? Or what is that?
It is a throwback, yes. Yeah. So we also call them area officers.
Oh, there you go.
Instead of beat officers, but.
Much nicer.
It sounded cool. I'll be honest.
It's an interesting question. My father was a San Francisco policeman, and I do remember in the 1960s where they were assigned was described as bear beat. But yeah, I'd be curious where that came from, because that is actually, when I think of it that way, it may not be the ideal descriptor that we want nowadays, but whatever. Anybody else? No, I have a quick couple of quick questions or things to point out, Mr. Obit. Thank you. Did a pretty good job putting up. Actually, I would say there was a lot of good news in there, too. So thank you for a very positive end to the evening. I appreciate that. The statue of Athena, I did notice the tape today driving through. I was curious. I appreciate the update. Are we still in contact? Or do you have contact for the artist Peter Compton? Compton or Compton, I believe, is his name. I was going to suggest if you can't get a hold of him, I noticed just within the last week or so, there's a companion piece that he did years ago to Athena that's sitting out at the Outdoor Gallery in Grayton, at the Grayton Art Gallery, which means if you call them, they can get in touch with him. If we don't have contact, I believe his background was creating arts, set things for theater. So he probably knows the materials used and the best way perhaps to patch or deal with it might even help us with it, who knows, for a reasonable price. So I would wanted to suggest that. I can't remember if it's Compton or Compton, but I suspect the internet would tell you. Let's see. I'm going to pass on my second question because at this point I can't really read my writing. That's interesting. And about the groundwater. So we're drilling exploratory wells at various depths to monitor groundwater. I think that's great. That's a good thing. And I know we need to watch that here just based on what we've learned in history. But my understanding of groundwater, it wasn't like some vast, open level basin that had many ins and outs in various areas it went and didn't go. So having a well here in Kattat, how much does that really tell us about our whole area? Or what other impacts, say, somebody right over in Ronald Park or Pengrove might have impacting this? Do we have kind of more modern idea of where the water is being drawn, where it comes from?
Yeah, the USGS, you know, we worked with the water agencies, you know, worked with the USGS to do a pretty comprehensive model. But they, my understanding is these these groundwater sustainability agency wells were placed in areas where they felt that there wasn't a lot of information, there wasn't enough information, or they wanted more information in certain areas because of the, you know, like public wells. So in other words, like city-owned wells, those are available, obviously, because they're a public asset for monitoring for the USGS or for the GSA. But with private wells, the vast majority of private wells are shallow. There are some bigger agricultural, when I say bigger, I mean deeper agricultural wells. But they're, you know, they they rely on private property owners to give them access to monitor the groundwater. And so in some cases, they get access, some cases they don't. So the GSA was designing these wells, is my understanding with this is what they call like a nested well, where they have different three different levels so they can measure the shallow, the medium, and the deep water, deep groundwater, because they're stratified. They have maybe clay layers between them so they don't necessarily communicate. And they're in this place here because of just the lack of a lot of monitoring data. And and they they kind of take all of the information from all of the wells, and they try to draw conclusions from a wide network of wells and different depths. So.
And I finally deciphered my handwriting. The interpretive panels have been waiting for. I just wanted to encourage you. I did see a spate of our signs. Some clever young person decided to tag with pens and paint. So if we and plus, people are taking advantage of that open space, thinking it's supposed to be used as a community billboard, which is an understandable thing. But then we have a lot of tape and tacks and other things going up. So I know we're working through other agencies trying to get input from them. But I would encourage if we have difficulty getting feedback at this point, I would encourage us just to go ahead and get them up so we can try and preserve this project and maintain it appropriately.
Yeah, we have a lot of the panels are, for whatever reason, everyone blames COVID now, that they just took forever to manufacture. And so this is, so we also have the interpreter, which is part of this line. But there's also other directional and maps, directional signage and maps and things like that. So that's what's that's what we plan to have up by mid-August. And yeah, we are looking at just trying to get some final feedback on the interpretive panel. And then that'd be the last piece that would add.
And I would encourage you, if we have any difficulty doing that, having made the effort once or twice, then I would go ahead just to, you know, I remember vaguely being 18, and that is a heck of a temptation laying out there for months and months. I almost can't blame somebody. So.
Yeah. Yep.
Thank you. All right. So if there's nothing further from anybody else in the council, then we will move to city council member reports. And I saw the vice mayor's hand go up like a rocket. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes. So Damian did a really good job of explaining those wells. Basically, there are data gaps, and that's one of the things in the plan is to help with the data gaps. And because Kattati is much more residential, and we don't have a whole lot of wells in our area, that's part of why our area was chosen to be one of the monitoring wells because we're also at the very end of the Santa Rosa Basin. So it's kind of they're all over the place. But but that was chosen specifically to to get some more data at our end of it. And speaking of Sigma, we had our meeting. God, the weeks were running together, but we were we approved our fee for this year. So the fee will be on the bills for those folks that have wells. So that that passed. So I'm sure we'll hear more from folks once it starts hitting their bills. And along with that, as Damian pointed out, a lot of wells aren't monitored. And one of the options that people have is to be able to provide data for those people that do have meters on their wells. And there have been some volunteers that are willing to share that data. So the more data we have, the better we can tell how the health of the different aquifers are. So so that's what that's all about. I also was attended the Waste Management Agency meeting, and that meeting, they shared with us the current waste characterization report. We hadn't done one since 2014. So this, we do them about every seven years. There's good news and bad news in it. The good news is that it appears that the work that we've done as far as recycling, recycling, those numbers are going down. So people are appropriately, you know, working very hard to recycle things in their blue bins. The bad news is that even though we have 18 AB 1383, the compostable stuff is not going down. So I suspect that there will be a lot more education on that, and we will see that that number change over time like we did with with the recycling. But yeah, I'm happy to share that report with anybody who would like like to know what kind of garbage that that is out there. And last but not least, I thought that at the end of June, the urban agriculture meeting that we had was great. There was a lot of great input. So hopefully, staff is busy working with that. But I thought that that was a great meeting. And that's all I have, Mayor, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any so I'll ask if there's any questions for Vice Mayor Harvey, or if anybody has any report else they report they'd like to make. And looking, not seeing any hands at the moment, I will let you think about that a second and just report on one thing that occurred since we last met, and that's that the city manager and I attended a virtual meeting on July 14 with the Northern California External Affairs Group out of Governor Newsom's office. Governor Newsom's office did some outreach a few weeks earlier to us, asking if we'd like to meet to share individual priorities, individual concerns, and have a started ongoing back and forth. In particular, they suggested if we have any legislative priorities that we're supporting, as we do from time to time, they asked us to send to them to see if that, you know, if we have inter interacting concerns there, they could support us and a few other things like that. So I think we will begin to see some back and forth from that. And they've already begun sharing various grant funding opportunities and services that are new from the state that might be valuable to the people of Kattati. So I think that's going to be useful for the staff here, useful for the next mayor, and very useful, I think, for the citizens of Kattati. And was pleased I've been here. What we've gone through two mayors, I think, Vice Mayor Harvey, or two governors we've seen since we've been on council. This is the first time I've seen an office actually make an organized reach out to the granularity of including Kattati. And and they were very professional and very good to deal with. So that was something something that I think was appreciated. And if we have no further comments on that, then that would wrap up city council member reports and take us right to item 14, which is public comments on non-action agenda items.
Mayor Landman, if I may, I did want to update you. That's okay. I know that you're you're working on the iPad. So you don't have the vision that some of us have. I just wanted to update.
Without the iPad, I don't at this point, John.
I just wanted to give an update on the continuum of care program that's going on through the county of Sonoma. We have another meeting coming up tomorrow. And I have also been appointed to the Funding and Evaluation Committee on the Continuum of Care, as well as the General Board. The Portrait of Sonoma County came out in 20, just recently was released, and this was done in 2021. And the last one was, the first one was done in 2014. So the elements of that have changed minimally. Some of it predicated on the being in a pandemic. So the human index on that shifts a little bit between those points. But I will go ahead and share that with the council, and it might be something you might want to pull a link up on the city website. But it's pretty interesting information. The the highest rating in all of Sonoma County is East Bennett Valley. As you can imagine, demographics on East Bennett Valley are primarily upper income Caucasian. So if that's the highest point in the index of potentially 100, and that's like 85, Kattati is in the neighborhood of 79. So so we're kind of there. But it's a really interesting report, and I'll forward that to you guys and then potentially share on the website. And then after the meeting tomorrow, I can let you know how that Funding and Evaluation Committee has gone. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So let's then now jump to public comment on non-action agenda items. If we could check in with the public very quickly.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. So this brings us to item 15, and I'll check in with the city manager and see what information we may have received after the agenda was posted, if any.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing other than what was discussed tonight.
Excellent. Well, with that, this takes us right to the last item on agenda, item 16, adjournment. So without objection, we are adjourned at 7:52. Thank you, everybody. See you next time.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.